Welcome to today's hearing for the Committee on Resiliency and Waterfronts and Parks and Recreation. At this time, please silence all electronic devices. If you wish to submit testimony, you may at testimony@council.nyc.gov. Thank you, chairs. We are ready to begin.
Good afternoon and welcome to today's hearing on resiliency of the city's benches and waterfronts. My name is Ari Kagan, and I have the privilege of chairing the Committee on Resiliency and Waterfronts. I want to thank my co-chair, Councilmember Krishnan, for holding this hearing. The city's boardwalks, beaches, and waterfronts provide New Yorkers recreational opportunities and also help to protect the city from coastal storms and floodings. In recent years, the city has seen an increase in tropical storm activity and severe flooding events. Boardwalks and beaches help protect residents and upland property against the effects of such storms and floodings. However, when our boardwalks and beaches fall into disrepair, then not only does this create hazardous conditions for people using them, but also its important line of defense is removed. The Coney Island Regiment Boardwalk is a landmark destination that attracts millions of visitors from all over the world every year. Even when I lived in Belarus, I've heard about legendary Coney Island Boardwalk. However, each year, visitors and residents are harmed by tripping hazards, planks with holes, nails, exposed nails, and damage to the boardwalk caused by heavy maintenance vehicles traveling on it, and of course, Mother Nature. It lacks basic services and concessions that beaches and boardwalks across the country and around the world provide to their visitors. Concessions and services create jobs, enhance the experience, and make for a safer environment. We must work together to ensure that there is enough funding for needed repairs and maintenance. The prior administration allocated $114.5 million to reconstruct the boardwalk, but we're still waiting to hear which areas will be reconstructed and how. Will this money be used only for maintenance activities? Will be proposed reconstruction enhanced resilience of the boardwalk and the surrounding neighborhood? I look forward to hearing from the administration about this during today's hearing. The Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, which was signed into law late last year, and the Inflation Reduction Act, which President Biden signed into law in August, will provide federal funding for mitigation projects and for projects to restore and protect coastal ecosystems. And just last week, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers announced its tentatively selected plan for New York, New Jersey Harbor and Tributaries Coastal Storm Risk Management feasibility study. The city's waterfronts are the first line of defense against coastal storms. Federal funding and projects would help shore up our defenses, and we would like to hear about administrations' plans, how to apply for this funding, when to apply for this funding, and the types of waterfront resilience projects that would be funded. I look forward to hearing from the Department of Parks and Recreation and the Mayor's Office of Climate and Environmental Justice today and discussions how the city is preparing our beaches and waterfront areas for and protecting New Yorkers from more severe storms and weather-related events. I also would like to know about Parks Department plans to create more hospitable beaches and boardwalk comparing to what we have today. In fact, today in the morning, we visited Coney Island Boardwalk together with my colleague, Chair Krishnan, and we witnessed firsthand the deplorable conditions of the Coney Island Boardwalk. Before we begin, I would like to thank my committee staff: Senior Committee Council Jessica Steinberg-Albin, Senior Policy Analyst Patrick Mulvihill, Finance Analyst Andrew Lane Lawless, my Chief of Staff Janine Keriketti, my Legislative Director Alex Timkev, as well as the staff for the Parks and Recreation Committee for all their hard work putting this hearing together. And now, I would like to turn to my great co-chair, Councilmember Shaker Krishnan.
Thank you so much, Chair Kagan. Good afternoon. My name is Shaker Krishnan. I'm the Chair of the Committee on Parks and Recreation, and I'd like to thank my co-chair, Councilmember Ari Kagan, the Chair of the Committee on Resiliency and Waterfronts for agreeing to hold this joint hearing. And it was also a pleasure to join Chair Kagan for a tour of the Coney Island Boardwalk today as well. I would have hoped for better weather to visit a beach, but last, we'll have to make do with what we got. But I do appreciate the visit and for the opportunity to see the boardwalk and the beaches myself. At this hearing, at this joint hearing, we will be examining the resiliency work being done to protect the city's beaches, waterfront areas, and the maintenance efforts made to preserve our city's boardwalks for the short and long term. At today's hearing, I'd also like to focus on the broader resiliency efforts that Parks is overseeing throughout our park system. The climate crisis is here, and its effects threaten the well-being of all New Yorkers. One of the more immediate effects, which has been particularly damaging to the city recently, is flooding. Such flooding events, most recently the remnants of Hurricane Ida in 2021, laid bare the inadequacy of the city's infrastructure to handle massive rain events and storms. Areas of the city that had never seen significant flooding before were shockingly underwater, leading to the loss of life and property. That also happened in Queens, in my borough, from across the borough to the waterfronts to my own district of Jackson Heights and Elmhurst, where, a topic for another day, the lack of protections for basement apartments meant that so many immigrant families who live in basement housing lost their lives or were under threat. The severity of these threats cannot be overstated. We are clearly not prepared as a city for what the future will bring us when it comes to flooding events. The Parks Department maintains approximately 14 miles of free public beaches that are typically open from Memorial Day weekend through the week after Labor Day. City beaches, including Brighton Beach, Cedar Grove Beach, Coney Island and Coney Island Boardwalk, Manhattan Beach, Midland Beach, and the Franklin D. Roosevelt Boardwalk, Orchard Beach and Promenade, Rockaway Beach and Boardwalk, South Beach, and Wolf's Pond Beach. Millions of people visit the city's beaches every year and use the boardwalks constantly. I echo the comments made by Chair Kagan regarding the state of our boardwalks and the need to properly maintain them. The fact that Regiment Boardwalk users still complain of tripping hazards posed by loose boards, planks with holes in them, and exposed nails, which I also saw myself in many areas of the boardwalk, is not acceptable. Damage resulting from heavy maintenance vehicle use is also still occurring despite the council having passed Local Law 141 in 2021, which limited heavy vehicle use to lower-weight maintenance vehicles. And I'd like to hear more about this issue at today's hearing as well. Returning to the issue of the urgent climate crisis we face and the role that the Parks Department can play in protecting our waterfronts to the extent possible and under its jurisdiction, there is still time to prepare and adapt our city infrastructure to better handle what will continue to come our way in the future, particularly by increasing the use of green infrastructure and making our parks more resilient. The city's green space can be adapted to expand their resiliency features, such as through the use of expanding the Green Streets program, building more rain gardens in areas that are starved of green space, broadening the reach of parks' features to their surrounding neighborhoods, building more playgrounds with green features, converting unused or abandoned land into green space, and of course, maintaining and expanding the city's tree canopy. Parks has been heavily invested in this process. As from November of 2017, they developed resiliency guidelines entitled "Design and Planning for Flood Resiliency: Guidelines for NYC Parks." The intent is to provide guidance for developing and renovating coastly resilient waterfront parks. The guidelines serve as a manual for planners, designers, and communities to reference while planning and developing coastly resilient parks and waterfront spaces. In particular, the guidelines discuss certain beach and boardwalk best practices, including the development of a plan for necessary beach nourishment to ensure the best possible performance during and after a storm event, elevating of boardwalks to be higher than the 100-year floodplain, and the usage of concrete planks set on top of concrete and steel piles to create stronger, more resilient boardwalks. I'm curious to see how this has informed the process by which the Parks Department has developed and renovated its various properties to become more resilient and whether recent storms have altered how the department thinks about its resiliency planning and what we can do and what the Parks Department can do in its role to help fortify our city and our coastlines for the worsening climate crisis. I look forward to discussing these issues at today's hearing and thank all of you who have come to participate. I'd also like to thank for today's hearing the great work by our staff of our Committee on Parks and Recreation, Christopher Sartori, Patrick Mulvihill, Chima Obisher, Rose Martinez, and Nicholas Maltebano. I also would like to thank the staff of my office as well, our Chief of Staff Chuck Park, and our Legislative Coordinator Greg Clark for their work for today's hearing. And now, I turn it over to our Councilor Chris to begin the next phase of the hearing.
Thank you, Chair Krishnan. At this time, I'd like to invite the Parks Department... Chair Kagan?
I also would like to acknowledge my great colleagues who joined our hearings from both Committees, Waterfronts and Resiliency and Parks: Councilmember Marte, Councilmember Gennaro, Councilmember Niors, Areola, Palladino, Menin, Dinovic, and Kar Moya. And I also would like to give a chance to transfer to our Senior Committee Council, Jessica Steinberg-Albin.
Thank you, Chair Kagan. We will now call on the administration to testify. Can you please raise your right hands? Do you affirm to tell the truth in your testimony before the committees today and to answer honestly to Councilmember questions? You may begin when ready. Thank you.
Good?
Yes, you can begin your testimony.
Okay. Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Chair Krishnan, Chair Kagan, members of the Parks Committee and Resiliency and Waterfronts Committee, and other members of the City Council. I'm Sue Donahue, the Commissioner of New York City Parks, and I am pleased to be joined here today by Iris Rodriguez-Rosa, our First Deputy Commissioner, along with Jennifer Greenfeld, our Deputy Commissioner for Environment and Planning, and other members of Park's senior staff, as well as our great colleagues from the Mayor's Office of Climate and Environmental Justice, Rebecca Fishman is sitting here with us this afternoon. I want to start by noting our appreciation for the council's continued advocacy for our city's parks, for the resources and support it has provided for our park system, and for convening a hearing on this very important and timely topic. New York City, as we know, is a coastal metropolis. Our waterfront, as you stated, is an incredible asset, providing recreational, ecological, aesthetic, cultural, and economic value throughout the five boroughs. However, as we've all learned all too well over the last decade, New York City's coastal location, which defines our city and brings us so much joy and pride, also presents significant risks and challenges in the face of the growing threat of climate change. As the entire world continues to learn and understand, and as we right now are seeing the tragic impacts of Hurricane Ian on the Caribbean and states along the southeastern U.S. coastline, climate change is real and is contributing to estimated sea level rise, heightened probability of increased frequency, and intensity of coastal storms, and other related hazards that particularly impact land and resources near the waterfront, as well as the population that lives, works, and recreates along our city's shoreline. As we have learned time and again in recent years, especially during the darkest days of the COVID epidemic, our city parkland is vital infrastructure, providing open space and recreational opportunities that improve our physical, mental, and emotional health and provide a wide array of countless benefits. To make sure that our park system remains the best that it can be, we are actively planning for the long-term resiliency of all of our parks and open spaces. In addition to approaching capital projects for individual parks with a goal of increasing resiliency, the agency oversees a number of ongoing initiatives to support citywide resiliency measures. Our focus on resiliency continues to adapt and evolve, but it has taken on various modes and forms in recent years, some of which I'd like to outline today. Before we talk about the importance of long-term resiliency planning for our parks, we should first recognize that the city has been forced to undertake massive recovery and repair efforts following major storms, most notably the horrific impacts of Superstorm Sandy, which hit New York City on October 29, 2012, nearly 10 years ago. Though these were tremendously difficult times as the storm inflicted unprecedented devastation and loss, our city rose to the occasion and came back stronger than ever. And the repair of our parks and waterfront amenities was central to that effort. Following Sandy, the city, with support from the federal government, has allocated over $1 billion to repair and recovery for New York City Parks properties, representing over 150 city- and FEMA-funded projects, including a full reconstruction of the Rockaway Boardwalk, substantial repairs to the Coney Island Boardwalk, and the replanting of over 10,000 trees that were lost in the storm. Though it was necessary to focus on recovery in the immediate aftermath of Sandy, it also completely changed the way we view our park system. In this new reality, improving the resiliency of new and existing parks, playgrounds, and open spaces has become a central priority for the agency. Park resiliency is an essential part of New York City Parks' sustainability agenda as we need our city parks and open spaces to not only withstand but recover from disruptive events such as coastal storms and catastrophic flooding, while also withstanding more gradual systemic threats such as sea level rise associated with global climate change. New York City has over 520 miles of coastline, and New York City Parks is proud to manage over 160 miles of that expanse, a significant responsibility. Our city's coastline is often the first line of defense against climate change impacts. So those who design and build public projects on our city's shorelines have a special responsibility to develop vibrant parks and open spaces and ensure that they are safe so they can continue providing ecological and social benefits well into the future. To this end, New York City Parks is proud to develop specific design and planning guidelines, as Chair Krishnan already mentioned, for the flood resiliency of our city parks to provide guidance for developing and renovating coastally resilient waterfront parks. These guidelines draw from our decades of experience with waterfront park planning and design, taking into consideration valuable lessons learned after Hurricane Sandy. Because every park site is unique with varying risk factors, site-specific conditions, surrounding upland context, recreational, ecological, and community needs, we use a contextual, site-by-site approach to planning and design for each new or renovated waterfront project. Resilient waterfront park design needs to account for the norm, not just the storm. In other words, waterfront parks should facilitate everyday public use during typical weather conditions while still including elements meant to manage and mitigate risk, an approach that maximizes parkland utility and public investment. This can include the mitigation of flood and storm risk along with consideration of erosion impacts and the importance of park tree canopy and other greening for biodiversity. Of course, this park-specific approach is above and beyond the helpful guidance provided to all city agencies led by the Mayor's Office of Climate and Environmental Justice in the form of newly updated climate resiliency design guidelines to ensure that new public infrastructure can withstand the more extreme flooding and other weather events that we can expect to experience in the future. Beyond the importance of protecting our parks and open spaces themselves from the impacts of climate change so they can remain places of rest and respite for all New Yorkers, we also know that parks can serve as resiliency infrastructure that helps protect local homes and businesses and the neighborhoods that surround them. Though the approaches can vary depending on location, site conditions, and surrounding context, we always seek to maximize those resiliency benefits when we're planning new parks or improving existing parks. This could range in scale from massive reconstruction projects to site-specific efforts to capture increased stormwater through the use of more permeable surfaces, rain gardens, and other retention measures. In partnership with New York City Department of Environmental Protection, we have implemented over $130 million in stormwater green infrastructure in parks throughout the city, and we are working along DEP to advance additional projects such as the daylighting of Tibbetts Brook in the Bronx. The East Coast Resiliency Project, currently underway, will protect East River Park from damage due to sea level rise and other climate impacts while also protecting thousands of local residents living in neighboring areas that were severely impacted by flooding during Superstorm Sandy. As part of their regional coastal protection and resiliency work, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers is partnering with New York City Parks on their Rockaway's Reformulation Project to rebuild and fortify the Rockaway Atlantic shoreline via stone groynes along the beachside, a new armored dune, sand replacement across the full beach, as well as flood protection and mitigation measures along the Jamaica Bay shoreline of the peninsula. In Staten Island, the Army Corps continues to advance design on a five-mile-long stretch for protective seawall, flood wall, and earthen levee, and a series of inland interior drainage areas on Staten Island's east shore from Fort Wadsworth to Great Kills Park. Lastly, it is important to note the ways in which our natural areas and ecosystems located throughout our park system also serve as vital resiliency infrastructure. Our agency portfolio includes 10,000 acres of natural areas, and our agency is advancing numerous projects around the city to help restore and bolster the resiliency benefits provided by nature. Since Sandy, we have implemented numerous ecological projects and programs, including salt marsh restoration, construction of living shorelines, coastal forest and grassland restoration, marine debris removal and ecological assessment, and investment of over $25 million. We are advancing multiple coastal wetland restoration projects that are critical to ensuring New York City's wetlands continue to provide critical functions such as the absorption of floodwaters for future generations. For example, in recent years, we completed wetland restoration projects at Pugsley Creek Park and Ferry Point Park in the Bronx, which recreated salt marsh that had been lost over the last century. And our dedicated staff are advancing related restoration projects in all of the five boroughs. Last year, to help guide these efforts, we published the Wetlands Management Framework in collaboration with the Natural Areas Conservancy. This document is the culmination of 10 years of research into the conditions of and threats facing our wetlands and reflects our decades of wetland restoration experience in New York City. The framework provides a 30-year roadmap for the ongoing preservation, restoration, and management of the wetlands and streams of New York City, with particular focus on those under the care of New York City Parks. Of course, any discussion of the positive resiliency benefits of our natural infrastructure needs to include our urban tree canopy, which is one of the most vital resources the city has in ensuring our neighborhoods are healthy and thriving and that they stay cool as temperatures heat up. Protecting and growing our urban forests leads to an incredible array of environmental, social, and economic benefits for this city such as stormwater capture, cleaning and cooling the air, protecting city pavement from rain and sun, noise mitigation, and increasing property values. This wide range of ongoing work reflects tremendous thought and hard work from our dedicated agency staff. Since Superstorm Sandy, our staff has provided their expertise to numerous strategic plans and studies undertaken by the city, identifying and prioritizing resiliency and restoration opportunities in all five boroughs, many of which are located in predominantly environmental justice and under-invested communities. As you've heard today, resiliency and climate concerns are central to our strategy as an agency, and this approach will continue to evolve and grow alongside our scientific understanding of the challenges we face. New York City has always been defined by ingenuity and innovation, and for that reason, it will remain home to the world's greatest and strongest parks, natural areas, beaches, and boardwalks, even as we all work collectively to manage serious impacts from a changing climate. We look forward to working together with the City Council and other stakeholders to continue to build and maintain a resilient park system for the city of New York and all of its residents. I thank you for the opportunity to testify here today, and we look forward to answering your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I also would like to recognize that we were joined by Councilmember Velasquez. Thank you. So I believe it's time to ask questions. Okay. First of all, thank you for your testimony. I would start this question that was often raised by the community in Coney Island and beyond. And today, we witnessed Coney Island Boardwalk, very heavy vehicles used by Department of Parks, not just Parks, by the way, also. We saw from breaking ground a car, and sometimes I see very large cars by police department. And I know that there is a local law, 61, passed in 2021, prohibiting all non-city-owned and non-authorized motor vehicles from being used on city-owned boardwalks. But even when we're talking about city employees, this law also requires authorized city employees or contractors to use small utility vehicles under $2,400 pounds for activities on wooden boardwalks unless larger vehicles are really, really necessary for emergencies or public safety needs. So my first question is obvious: How Department of Parks is planning to implement this? Because we're getting constant complaints, we see pictures on social media of large, sometimes several large vans from Department of Parks without any kind of emergency. And no matter how boardwalk will be repaired, it's still going to be a huge issue. So how are you planning to implement this? That's my first question.
Thank you, Councilmember Kagan. And we're very aware of the local law and have worked hard to implement it and to make sure... hard to implement it and to make sure that we are doing our part to keep personal non-authorized vehicles off the boardwalk. We have implemented, you know, there are bollards in place out there to restrict vehicle access to the boardwalk. There are, though, instances where our staff does need to be out there maintaining the boardwalk, and that's a very important priority of ours, and that does at times require that we use large-size vehicles in order to carry out that important work, which I know you want us to be out there and doing, caring for the boardwalk. We have transitioned, you know, that we make active use of ATVs, Jem carts, smaller equipment when and where we can, but in order to be able to efficiently maintain the boardwalk to our standards and to keep it the iconic space that is for New Yorkers, it does sometimes require larger vehicles on the part of the Parks Department.
So the question is like, do you know about any violations of this law that have occurred in the past year or any kind of episodes, even of one fine that had been levied to anybody who broke this law, even one fine?
We have issued summonses to vehicles, specifically cars on the boardwalk. However, the number is, I can report, very low. We've also addressed motor, scooters on our property, have issued summons for that as well, but the number is low. But we do issue summonses when we see it and our PEP is active in doing so.
And again, we understand the need for maintenance. We wanna
Absolutely, yes.
Every boardwalk to be maintained in a good shape, no question. And we understand sometimes its construction materials are heavy, et cetera, et cetera. But very often, again, we see absolutely needlessly large cars on the boardwalk without doing anything, just like driving around or standing there, which have pictures on social media on a regular basis, sometimes three cars at the same times, not even one, you know, like so. And there is no need for this whatsoever, no emergency, no need for maintenance, and could be different kind of vehicles used.
We do use mobile crews to effect maintenance on our boardwalk and in our parks location, that is a van, and as groups of individuals that travel together, therefore litter removal and cleanup and for ongoing maintenance. So yes, sometimes you will see those vehicles, but I can attest that, you know, it's a very hardworking staff out there, they're not out there for, without good reason, they are there to clean and make sure the boardwalk is well-maintained.
I just would like to emphasize, this is a very serious, important issue. It will affect any boardwalk, including Coney Island boardwalk, in any way, shape, or form, it will affect anyway regardless of how much money would be allocated to restore the boardwalk, to repair the boardwalk. If it will be heavy vehicles all the time, no matter how much money we will pour into it, it will be broken anyway. So, and we witnessed today, like it's not, sometimes, again, it's not necessary to use all the time very heavy vehicles. So the second topic is like also very important about regular maintenance, like how much money, how much maintenance funding has been allocated for each of Department of Parks-owned boardwalks for fiscal year 2023? Like, we wanted to know roughly, how much money are we talking about a year?
Thank you, Councilmember, for the question. We, our budget is allocated not typically by amenity or asset like that, it's budgeted by borough, it's budgeted to include headcount deployment, titles of staff, so I couldn't give you a breakdown of how our budget is allocated by property type like that. But we do allocate resources based on the care and maintenance of the boardwalk. We'd be happy to talk through with you kind of how we allocate money by borough and by district, but we don't break it down by amenity such as by boardwalk.
Yeah, I would like to see these numbers, how much money allocated for this fiscal year? I would say for each boardwalk, including Coney Island boardwalk, but for each boardwalk. This way, people and communities would be known how much money we're talking about, if it's not enough, and of course, it's never enough, but at least we would know how much money we're talking about. Because like talking about maintenance, sometimes even pure simple maintenance will make a huge difference when we're talking about litter, when we're talking about piles of sand or growing weeds or just even simple maintenance would be very helpful. And of course, I know right now is going on, like at least in Coney Island, boardwalk planks replacement, also it's like regular maintenance because we see a lot of holes and nails. So how much money we're talking about will be very, very useful.
We'd be happy to sit down and talk with you, though.
Okay, the next question is will be specifically about Coney Island region on boardwalk, I will use this chance as a chair of the committee. So any updates to the proposed plan, to what specific areas will be reconstructed? Can you more specifically describe the resiliency measures that will be part of this boardwalk reconstruction? What is the status of reconstruction between West 24th Street and West 27th Street of the boardwalk for which one, $11.5 million of funding was already allocated, but it has been delayed due to COVID? And finally, what are the reasons for the very, very high cost of the Coney Island Boardwalk Reconstruction Project? I was told by Brooklyn Parks Commissioner that we are talking on the ballpark between $600 million just to restore everything. So people always asking why it's so much?
Absolutely. So for the first part of your question, so in terms of the reconstruction of the entire boardwalk, Parks in 2021 was pleased to receive $114 million in city funding to reconstruct the boardwalk. As a first step, we are going to undertake, and we are in the process, we have a consultant on board, we're undertaking a technical study of the boardwalk to really dig into the exact extent and scope of the work for Phase One. The study will include conducting surveys, conditions inspection, as well as performing flood modeling to help us determine exactly what should be done. This is a massive project on an iconic amenity for New Yorkers, so it is not something that we undertake lightly, it's going to take a lot of work, we want to make sure that this boardwalk is going to be resilient and functional for the next 150 years, for generations to come. So it's a massive project, and so our first step is that technical study, it kicked off in September, and this will help us determine Phase One design and construction, and we'll know more after that study is complete. In terms of the construction specifically between 24th Street and 27th Street, as you said, $11.5 million has been allocated in that. That is for specifically replacing sections of the boardwalk that are definitely, we realize, in need of repair. That was somewhat delayed due to COVID, and then also, this project is going to involve placing ADA ramps, so we've been working with DEP and DOT on that, but we are on target there, the design will be complete for that, that section in spring of 2023. And then in terms of why is the number so significant, just like, you know, all projects across the city, we're, you know, supply chain issues, inflation is driving up costs, and this is a, you know, it's a huge and really significant reconstruction and resiliency project. So we don't like to see really high numbers either, but it's a massive undertaking, we want to make sure it's done right, and we want to make sure it lasts, as I said, for generations to come. It's an expensive undertaking, for sure.
Thank you. I would like to clarify, you mentioned a few things I would like to clarify. So you're saying the reconstruction between West 24th and 27th will be finished in the fiscal year 2023?
The design for that project will be done, the design will be done in spring of 2023, and that will determine how we're going to move forward with that reconstruction.
Design will be decided in 2023?
Exactly.
But the actual work will be done?
Will start probably a year after that.
The year after that?
Yeah, we have to go through procurement, bid it out to a contractor, yes.
So as more I see, even when money was allocated, it still take a very, very long time?
Mm-hmm.
And $114.5 million that was allocated is huge help of my predecessor, Councilmember Mark Trager, under the previous administration, but money actually, as I know, went to Department of Parks in July of this year, but any kind of work even started? Or it's October of this year, anything started with this money?
With the, with the $11.5 million that was
$114.5 million, that's not a small change?
No, not at all. Yes, that work has kicked off, that's the project, that's the study that we're undertaking.
So the work started?
Yeah, the, the study has started, yes. We've hired a consultant, we've started meetings, yes, for the study, yeah.
Hiring consultants? Because again, it's not just I'm asking, community is asking all the time, when they see number, $114.5 million.
Right.
It's not $114, it's $114.5 million.
Absolutely.
And money went to Department of Parks on July 1st.
Yeah.
And in October, I have to come back to my community and to say, okay, city is planning to hire consultants in October, like many, many months later, so what should I say? They're hiring consultants right now with $114 million?
We're hiring consultants, we're conducting a very thorough study and survey to make sure that this reconstruction is done right, that it's resilient, that it's sustainable, and that it will be, that there'll be, you know, a sustainable boardwalk in place for years to come. We are, as you know, doing work consistently, we did work all summer on the issues with the boardwalk, on where there are pieces that are raised, on the raised nails, we had Wood Wednesdays, you know, all summer, where we had our city carpenters and three crews out there addressing problematic issues of the, so there's ongoing work that's happening, Councilmember, on a regular basis that happened all through the summer, and I know you're out and saw that with our Borough Commissioner in person, that work that was happening. The larger project is massive, we understand, it's a huge amount of money, we want to make sure that money is spent in a way that is responsible and that gets the best outcome for the people of Coney Island and the thousands of city residents who use that boardwalk.
I just want to emphasize, it's not just Coney Island, and it's not just Brighton Beach, and it's not even just South in Brooklyn, we're talking approximately, if, if boardwalk is finally fixed, we're talking about millions and millions of people every year, we're talking about economic development, we're talking about tourism, we're talking about many, many families enjoying, you know, like it's, it could be economic engine instead of like just embarrassment.
Absolutely, that's why we want to do it right, yeah, absolutely.
One more topic, I believe I looked at your testimony, did you even mention term accessibility? Because we have a lot of advocates today for people with disabilities, and I am checking, checking, are you even considering this topic, accessible boardwalk, accessible ramps, accessible for people with disabilities, for seniors? That's another complaint I'm constantly hearing. Today, when I visited a boardwalk with my colleague, and you asked me a question, why people on the Stillville Avenue, why it's not accessible too for people with disabilities?
Absolutely, absolutely, and that's where the, the project that's between West 24th and West 27th, we're coordinating with both DEP and DOT on ADA ramp access for that project, absolutely, it's something that we're thinking of, not only for this, but that larger project for the boardwalk, that's one of the important considerations, is accessibility, absolutely.
Because according to Brooklyn Parks Commissioner Mari Mar, he told me that the larger plan we're talking about will include, if it's correct, you can correct me, 27 accessible ramps to boardwalk, is it true?
I think that's what the study is to determine, Councilmember, I don't know that we have an exact number, but it is a testament to the fact that we want to make it as accessible as possible, and yes, it will include accessibility.
I just wanted to make sure, this is very, very important topic, because like again, people with disabilities, seniors constantly complaining about inaccessible boardwalk, and we're not even talking about everything else, but on top of the holes and nails and everything else, and we will probably talk today also about safety, not just from nails and holes, but also from, in terms of public safety.
Absolutely.
I mean, like, crime and everything else, you know.
ADA accessibility is a very important priority for the Parks Department, and every single project that we do, we take into account ADA access, we have to, by law, by any, for any reconstruction we do, but it's also an important priority for me and for my administration, absolutely.
Please take it into consideration, it's very, very important.
Absolutely.
Okay, last question, as you know, I mean, not last question today, but last question on my time, is, as you probably know, people who are getting hurt on a boardwalk, some of them are filing claims against the city of New York, and today we met one gentleman, he got hurt three times, his wife broke her arm, and she didn't file any claim, she didn't even, she did call 911 for, for help, but like didn't file a claim against city of New York. But are you tracking this? Do you know, like, I requested from City Controller this information, it took me a while, but I got this information, and I know we're talking at the very least about millions and millions and millions of dollars paid by the city of New York to victims of the boardwalk, not to, we're not getting millions from the boardwalk because it's great, but we are paying to victims of the boardwalk, millions and millions of dollars, and this number I would multiply by five because like many immigrants are not, do not even know what is it to file claim against the city, et cetera, et cetera. Do you track any of this? Do you know, do you have this information?
Parks is not aware of the city tracks this type of information, money paid out in lawsuits, that would be a question for corporate counsel or for the Controller's office.
Controller. But are you aware at least that city is paying every year millions of dollars to victims who got hurt on a boardwalk? Are you aware of it at least?
I'm not aware of specific lawsuits, no, but as always, you know, we would, we do not, that's not something that we like to have happen, obviously, our parks are there for people's enjoyment and recreation, it's something that we take seriously, we never want people to get hurt, and we look to avoid that as best we can.
I personally know many victims of the boardwalk, some who filed claims and some who didn't file claims, and I'm sick and tired of getting pictures of people, parts of the body who got hurt there on a regular base.
Mm-hmm.
When we visited together with Councilmember Silvina Brooks-Powers, in front of us, one lady fell down, and we barely held her, otherwise it will be another victim of the boardwalk. Okay, I would like to now give a chance to speak to my great colleague, Chair Krishnan.
Thank you so much, Chair Kagan, thank you Commissioner Donahue, and everyone from the Parks Department, the Mayor's Office who's joined us today. I'd like to ask a few questions more broadly about the preparations by the Parks Department for making sure our waterfronts and our inland parks are also more resilient. Could you describe in a bit more detail the works that DPR has been doing to protect waterfront parks from the effects of severe weather and climate change, and what about resiliency measures taken by the department along the waterfronts and beaches in the Parks Department's jurisdiction?
Yes, absolutely, and thank you, Councilmember, for the question. We have, over many years, done an enormous amount of work to protect our city's beaches and coastlines. We've partnered with, as you heard in my testimony, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers on resiliency projects, we've worked closely with the Mayor's Office of Climate and Environmental Justice on everything from dune, sand replacement, dune reconstruction, fortifying our dunes, and large projects like the East Coast Resiliency Project, which is DDC-led and in partnership, constructing seawalls, so we are looking at all ways to partner and fortify our coastlines.
And are there any specific waterfronts that the Parks Department is worried about in particular that are especially vulnerable?
I think that all of our waterfronts are, what we've seen over the last few years and with the increase in storms and the intensity of storms, all of our waterfronts are vulnerable, unfortunately. We've seen extensive damage, you know, starting from Sandy and beyond in the Rockaways, and that's an area that's been a significant amount of concentration and, and public investment by the federal government and by the Parks Department, and we're thankful for that partnership, whether it be all of the sand replenishment, dune replenishment, we've worked really hard on planting beach grass, and, and you heard in my testimony our work with shoring up our wetlands. We know that by fortifying our wetlands is a way that we can make sure that we have places where water can be absorbed, so we are concerned about all, all parts of our coastline.
And I would assume that the Parks Department also is deploying an environmental justice framework to thinking about the waterfronts, and we know, of course, that there are poor communities of color across the city that are especially vulnerable to the effects of climate change, and that's equally true on our waterfronts as well. Has the Parks Department taken that perspective into account in determining the measures that it will take to address these issues?
Absolutely, everything that we do in our capital reconstruction projects, in our tree planting, across the board, and, and all of our reconstruction efforts, we're taking into account and working closely with the Mayor's Office of Climate and Environmental Justice. A lot of our work is focused on the tree neighborhoods, the neighborhoods that were identified by the Task Force on Racial Equality, and so that is how we target, as I said, tree planting, a lot of our restoration efforts are based on making sure that investments are focused on areas of highest need.
And just a few more questions from my end, so, you know, another issue that, as I mentioned before, is about the work that the Parks Department is doing, not just on our waterfronts, but also our inland parks as well, that are particularly prone to flooding, the spillover effects of coastal flooding or because of other similar severe to flooding, the spillover effects of coastal flooding, or because of other similar severe events like we saw during IDA in 2021. And so what work, and I also see our deputy commissioner, who oversees our trees, who did a fine job talking about our trees at our Tree Canopy hearing, he's here too. What is the work that Parks is doing for our inland parks, for our tree canopy, to ensure that we're protecting it from, from the incoming, oncoming impacts of climate change?
Thank you for that question. And it is, I'm really proud of the work that the Parks Department has done. We learned a great deal from Sandy. And that's why I knew even referenced in 2017, we came out with our own design principles, our guidelines for resiliency. How do we build most resilient parks? In every single capital project that we take on now, we are looking for, how do we increase permeable surfaces? How are we adding more green for absorption? And looking at tree planting, not only in newly constructed parks, but along the perimeter of parks, in our street trees. We have worked closely with, hand in hand with the Department of Environmental Protection, incorporating green infrastructure into our reconstruction processes. So with our Community Parks Initiative, where we're renovating parks across the city in high-need neighborhoods, over half of those projects have included green infrastructure. We are, as I said, looking at it across the board in everything we do. We know, we have, over many years, I'm really proud of our expertise in, in helping to enhance our urban tree canopy. And you recognize, Jennifer, Deputy Commissioner for Environment and Planning, we have, we have nationwide expertise in this area. And it's because of the work that we've done and the recognition of how important our urban tree canopy is in terms of addressing issues of climate change. So capturing storm water, reducing the effects of urban heat island. We have, that's why we've prioritized tree planting. That's why this administration has been very generous in terms of providing funding, record funding for tree planting in, in this most recent budget. And it is a huge source of how we're making sure that we are building the resiliency of our city is through our enhancing our urban tree canopy.
I know we had heard-
Jennifer, is there anything that you want to add there?
Okay.
And I know that at the last hearing, we spoke extensively about the, the tree canopy and the work there with the Parks Department. I do want to say, I do appreciate the efforts of Parks to, in renovating our parks and playgrounds, thinking about environmental measures. I think the Community Parks Initiative, I know we'll be working together on that as well, is a really important initiative, both to address parks equity and also in doing so affect, address climate issues as well. So I do appreciate the department's focus on that through the CPI program, which I think is a great program and should be further expanded too, in my opinion. Just returning to, for a few more questions, as Chair Kagan mentioned, I did go out to the boardwalk this morning and take a look at for myself, the issues that are being raised, the need for maintenance work, and what that reveals about both the Coney Island boardwalk, as, as well as more, boardwalks more broadly. And one thing I did notice, in addition to the points that Chair Kagan made, which stood out to me, was the presence of vehicles on the boardwalk. And this is an issue that also is personally important to me, because in Flushing Meadows, Corona Park, which is our park in Queens as well, during the U.S. Open, there are a number of vehicles, and I recognize that's also the U.S. Open's responsibility and fault to, that will park on the grass, damaging the grass for, for weeks at a time. But it's something that's of strong concern to us in Queens. And seeing the cars on the boardwalk and knowing the damage that will do, I do know that former Councilmember Traeger had passed the legislation. And so I do want to just emphasize that point, that especially as we talk about climate change and we're moving towards a more resilient city, we need to make sure we're getting those cars off of our boardwalks, off of our grass, in, in our parks or on our boardwalks. And just another question about the, our beaches and boardwalks. Can you talk a little bit about how they're cleaned, what methods the Parks Department uses, how, how you figure out where to deploy maintenance workers and implement maintenance procedures?
Absolutely, yes. Cleaning of our beaches and boardwalks is an important priority for us at the Parks Department. And we deploy maintenance workers as needed based on coverage, how, you know, miles of coverage that we have, how many different areas that we need to cover. Our, our cleaning of beaches generally involves raking the beaches. Really proud to report, and I know that many people know this, we have a 24-hour operation in Coney Island. We actually clean that beach all night, overnight, in order to have it clean on a weekday and weekend mornings for people. It's an extensive operation, and one that we dedicate a whole lot of staff to. But our, generally, the way we clean beaches is by raking them.
And finally, returning to the topic of environmental sustainability, on September 24th, as I'm sure you saw, the, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers released its draft feasibility report and Tier One environmental impact statement for the New York-New Jersey Harbor and Tributary Study. The report details the Corps' $52 billion, 14-year construction plan to install 12 storm gates across the city's waterways and erect coastal barriers across over 41 miles of the city's shorelines, from Southern Brooklyn to East Harlem, Lower Manhattan, and the entire Rockaway Peninsula. And I know there's been much discussion about it already. I've read some stuff too on all sides of the issue. And so I would just want to know a little bit more about, has the administration reviewed, reviewed the proposed plan? What are your initial thoughts and reactions to it?
The Parks Department welcomes the Army Corps' progress on this important project. And we look forward to reviewing their report. It was just recently released, as you know, in late September. We will absolutely be working collaboratively, collaboratively with them, as well as our partners in New York State, New Jersey, elected officials, and the public, to make sure that the final recommendation reflects the needs of all New Yorkers. We would absolutely encourage council members to engage with their constituents, to get their feedback. This is going to be a collaborative process. This is going to be about government and community working together to determine best, what, the best way to move forward. So it's a really important study. We're anxious to move forward with them. But right now, we are just at the point of reviewing this recently released report.
Thank you. And I look forward to more conversations and discussions about it as well. No further questions from me. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Chair Krishnan. I would like to ask one more question related to beaches, not boardwalks. But it's all interrelated, about safety. I noticed during the past season that, first of all, it's not enough, parks enforcement officers, including on the boardwalk, including on beaches. And sometimes when they're even there, sometimes I know that it's a lot of work to do. We're talking about sometimes millions of people. So how many parks enforcement officers do we have in New York City in total? And I would prefer to know, like, even borough by borough, or, because I saw some of them, and they told me they're not even from Brooklyn, they came from other boroughs, because it's a big shortage.
Absolutely. And thank you, council member, for recognizing the importance of our PEP officers. They are stretched thin. As I said, it's 168 miles of coastline. We have 300 PEP officers, 300 PEP officers. We do have seasonal staffing that is added. So from May to September, 57 PEP officers get step-ups to supervise the 250 seasonal employees we hire. Of this number, 14 sergeants and 78 CSAs are baseline to be assigned to beaches. In addition, Rockaway Beach and Coney Island both had step-up captain assigned. We also implemented, you may have seen out there, our post-Labor Day beach plan, starting September 13th through October 15th. And during this time, beaches are patrolled, and patrons swimming are advised that beaches are closed to swimming.
Thank you, 300. So, in my opinion, clearly not enough for that city and so many beaches and boardwalks. But at least we now have a number, 300. And how do they cooperate with police? Because we did have several unfortunate incidents past summer on a boardwalk. And like, I don't want finger pointing, who is responsible, NYPD or parks enforcement officers? How do they cooperate?
I didn't hear part of your question.
How do they cooperate? Parks enforcement officers and NYPD?
Okay.
Well, it's an issue of the safety on the boardwalk.
Yes, absolutely. The parks enforcement officers are there to enforce park rules. We really rely on a very strong partnership with PD, and that partnership is by borough, really by district. And we are thankful for a really strong partnership with PD. In the Rockaways this summer, PD was out there and helping us on the beaches and keeping people out of the water. They, we have a close partnership in Coney Island as well. And it is an active coordination effort, whether it be around illegal vending, whether it be around keeping people out of the water. It is very much a close partnership between PD and our PEP officers. And I just want to note, it's 300 PEP officers full-time. We do have seasonal staff that is added to our PEP staff in the summer. And we can get you those exact numbers.
One more issue that was raised this season, but it's a chronic problem for many, many, many years. Like, huge chunk of beaches, at least in South and Brooklyn, was basically closed to swimmers due to the shortage of lifeguards. I definitely would like to have at least one question and your answer. What's going on in New York City for many, many years? That was even before COVID. During the COVID, and even now, this year, at least 50% of Coney Island, Brighton Beach beaches were closed for swimmers due to the lack shortage of lifeguards. I know that Mayor raised salary of lifeguards. What else could be done to prevent this next year? Because it's a problem, as I understand, citywide.
Thank you for the question, council member. And as you know, this is not a problem that's unique to New York. There was a national lifeguard shortage. And we were actually really proud in New York City that we were able to open all nine of our beaches and 52 public pools this summer. We were unique in that. There are many municipalities across the city that did not open their beaches or their pools due to national lifeguard shortage. And while we, we have experienced that during COVID, prior to that, we had a pretty significant corps of lifeguards. COVID did interrupt that for sure. People weren't swimming, places weren't available for swimming. So the lifeguard corps definitely diminished. My first deputy sitting with me, Iris Rodriguez-Rosa, is working hard on lifeguard recruitment, working with every single schools, swim teams. We're working with DOE. We're reaching out across the board to make sure that we can recruit and bring in more lifeguards this season. But while we weren't able, you mentioned Coney Island, and only part of the beach was open. You're right, because of not having enough lifeguards, we couldn't fully open the entire beach. But we were pleased that, given the significant conditions and the challenges we were facing, we were able to open every single beach this summer.
So first of all, I would like you to start preparing for the next season.
I can assure you, we are.
Not in May, but now, because like, again, people will be, people calling our office all the time. We cannot, we cannot use a beach. What the point of the beach if we cannot use it, you know, like?
You would love the help from the City Council recruiting lifeguards. If you have no any teenagers, kids, sons, daughters, we would get out the word. We'd love the help recruiting.
We published all of these recruitment ads all the time on our social media, but probably more should be done.
Thank you.
Also, what about maintenance workers? Do we have a shortage of maintenance workers? Because today, like, like today in Coney Island, Brighton Beach, it's almost three miles of the boardwalk, only two bathrooms are opened due to, as I understand, shortage of maintenance workers and preparations for the wintertime. And there was the same situation all September, when weather was fantastic, only two bathrooms were open for three miles of the boardwalk. So like, what about maintenance workers? Do we have enough maintenance workers for Parks Department?
We, while we could always use more maintenance workers and more resources for the Parks Department, it's 30,000 acres and a lot of area to cover. We don't have a shortage of maintenance workers. We have 30 comfort stations along the city's boardwalk, and 27 of them are open and functioning and available to the public. In Brooklyn and Coney Island, we have eight comfort stations for Coney Island and Brighton Beach. We do start a process at this time of year where we winterize and close some of those comfort stations, but they're out, they're exposed to the elements. There's not as many people on the beaches. We do close them to winterize them.
Right after Labor Day, it started closing it, there were-
Don't, not right after Labor Day, but it is a process, because there are, as I said, there are 30 of them across the city. It takes a while. So there is a process, but that doesn't start right after Labor Day. No, it's after that.
Just want you to know, when, if it's September and beautiful weather, and bathrooms are closed, you know what people are going to do, yes? So, and that will affect everybody. So like, I believe, it's also like, just a point, that in September, if it's a great weather, and like, we have two bathrooms, at least two weeks ago, it was a good weather, and there were only two bathrooms opened. And obviously, people found different ways to relieve themselves.
Yeah.
Which is absolutely not good to anybody.
Absolutely.
So, again, sorry for being so, but like, we need to discuss it. If not now, then where?
Yeah, absolutely.
Now, I wanted to ask a question to Mayor's Office of Climate and Environmental Justice. First of all, I'm very, very happy that such office even exists, because like, it's so good, so right, such a right thing to do. I cannot even stop. It's long overdue, so I'm very glad that this office even exists to begin with. So that's great. So my question to Rebecca Fishman, you know that federal funding exists for many, many projects we are talking about today, and other resiliency projects all over the city. So how aggressive, I would say, Mayor's Office of Climate and Environmental Justice, trying to apply for all of this federal funding from different parts, you know, like Inflation Reduction Act, infrastructure money, et cetera, et cetera. We're talking about billions of dollars city cannot find in their own money. We cannot, we do not want to raise any kind of taxes. We want to use money that is available, not to go to Texas, but to go to New York, for example, for climate and environmental justice.
Thank you very much for your question, council member. We have consistently advocated for proactive federal funding stream for resiliency projects, and we continue to do so.
Do you mind just moving the mic a little bit closer to you?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Thank you.
Can you hear, is this, is that working?
Do, do-
It's on.
It's on?
Yeah.
Oh, it's on?
It's on, but I don't think, I'll just speak up really loudly. We've consistently advocated for proactive federal funding stream for resiliency projects, and we will continue to do so. We are currently collaborating with the Parks Department and other New York City agencies, our FLA, and our Office of Management and Budget, to understand eligibility requirements for certain funding streams, like the IIJA and the IRA, and are identifying resiliency projects and programs that will most serve vulnerable communities, adapt our most essential infrastructure, and make the city a more livable home for New Yorkers. We are also seeking opportunities at the state level. And this year, we're excited to see that the Environmental Bond Act will be on the ballot this November. We believe these funds could help us jumpstart new programs in the short term. All in all, we are just really looking forward to taking advantage of the funds available for our federal partners and making sure that our resiliency portfolio is complete and can be as accelerated as possible.
So do you need help from City Council? We can write a letter to state and federal government saying, we need this money badly, you know, like, look what's going on just like in the last few days. After like heavy rain and storm, already like parts of the city, you know, definitely need help. So do you need letters from City Council to help you?
Yes, and we will always look for your support in these projects. And in fact, I know some City Council members were really instrumental in us winning a few of those FEMA Building Resilient Infrastructure in Communities grants, or BRIC grants. So we just won $50 million for the Seaport Coastal Resiliency Project, and we won additional stormwater funding throughout New York City. So thank you all to the City Council, who helped us write letters in support of those projects, and we hope to continue to work together on that.
Okay, thank you. So now, I wanted to give a chance to my colleagues to ask questions. First question, like, Councilmember Gennaro, he had to leave, as I understand, he sent us this question. Local law 42 of 2012 mandated the creation of New York City Task Force on Climate Change Adaptation. Was the task force ever created? New York City Task Force on Climate Change Adaptation.
In 2012, did you say?
Yeah, the law was passed, local law 42 of 2012 was passed, 2012. Was it created?
Is that the task force that created the Special Initiative on Recovery and Resiliency, or the SER report?
It's part of the New York City Panel on Climate Change.
New York City Panel on Climate Change.
Well, the New York City Panel on Climate Change, yes. So we have definitely convened the New York City Panel on Climate Change. Thank you for your question. Throughout, since Sandy, they just released a report in 2019 with new projections for stormwater, for coastal storms, and for sea level rise and heat. And they continue to work and refine the science, and will release a report as they do so, in the next year or two, I believe.
I would like to give a chance to ask a question. Councilmember Carr.
Thank you, Chair Kagan and Chair Krishnan, for convening this hearing on such a critical issue. Commissioner, always good to see you. My question is about the ongoing seawall project. Do you- You referenced that five-mile waterfront, which is completely in my district, very proud of our boardwalk and Midland Beach Promenade. But I think the, the fact that this project hasn't started yet with our federal partners is really making it difficult for us to vision, let alone enact, something along the waterfront. And it's creating maintenance issues, because I think you, as an agency, have to decide, is it really worth it for us to make this fix when maybe the boardwalk won't be there in its current form? But we do have, you know, bent pieces of wood, planks that need to be replaced, lighting that needs to be maintained. Could you talk a little bit about how you're balancing the oncoming project with our current maintenance needs?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Carr, and appreciate the question. You're right, that is delayed, it's taking a long time, that project. We are not stopping with ongoing maintenance and care for the boardwalk. We recognize that whatever that project is, is going to be a ways out, and that we are completely committed to making sure that we have good ongoing maintenance and care. So while we have our eyes on that, and there's members of my planning team here who are very involved in, in that process with our federal government partners, we are continuing to move forward with taking care of the day-to-day maintenance, for sure.
I appreciate.
And if you're not finding that, then we want to know about it.
Okay, understood. No, I appreciate that. So far, so good. But I also want to ask not so much a resiliency question, but a boardwalk issue. My understanding is that Parks did issue an RFP for this summer for mobile food vendors and whatnot and associated businesses, and that no replies were received. I'd like to work with you and your team on maybe what the RFP for next year might look like, so we might get some additional solicitations from the public.
Thank you, we'd so appreciate that, absolutely. Sometimes that happens, we don't get responses, but we do work closely with the community, with our elected officials. Would love the help, you know, for RFP for next summer, absolutely.
I appreciate that. And so on the resiliency end, and I think, you know, we had exchanged correspondence about Willowbrook Pond Park and the role some of our ponds, which are waterfronts in their own way, can play in terms of maintaining area drainage in communities and what dredging projects might be on scale for the future. Can you talk a little bit about your thoughts on that? And, you know, how we could work together to make some of these dredging projects maybe happen in the near future?
Absolutely. I mean, we are looking at all, as, you know, I said in my testimony and in response to some of my questions here, we're looking at all, you know, manner of different interventions and things that will help us deal with what we know are significant impacts of flooding, stormwater management. And so I'd be happy to talk with you further about, specifically about dredging for Willowbrook and Willowbrook and that pond. I don't have specifically our plans, how we want to address it today, but happy to speak further with you on it, for sure.
Okay, appreciate that. And then my last question, dovetailing from what Chair Kagan was talking about earlier with respect to PEPs. So 300-plus citywide, I understood that about six are assigned to Staten Island. Is that an accurate count at this stage?
Let me see, Councilmember Carr, I know I have some numbers that break PEP out by, by Borough. If I don't have them here in front of me, I can absolutely follow up with you and get you that number.
Sure. So my, my understanding is that it's been single digits for a long time. And, you know, normally I bow to the population demands of our sister boroughs, but I think we're one-third parkland in Staten Island, very proud of that. But that's a lot of acreage, a lot of real estate to protect. And I think that, you know, much like, I think Chair Kagan may be experiencing on the, the boardwalk in his district, you know, we're, there's all kinds of issues, you know, illegal dumping that takes place in some of our passive parkland. You're about to become custodians of fresh kills, which is a massive security undertaking, not to mention the boardwalk and all of our active recreation areas. So would love to see what we can do to beef that up, because the demands are only getting worse. And while there may not be as much volume of people, you have a lot of places where people can get lost and, and get to mischief, so that's.
Absolutely. No, and we appreciate that. And we do try to bolster our numbers seasonally, so we'll add more at the busiest times of the year. So we do that in Staten Island, but absolutely, we can talk, you know, further about ways that we can increase that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Chairs.
Thank you. I would like to give a chance to ask question to Councilmember Niers.
Thank you Chair, Chairs. Nice to meet you, Commissioner. I just had a follow, a couple of follow-up questions, but one was to the Army Corps study. Just a question for the Mayor's Office of Climate and Environmental Justice. Can you share a little bit more about how you worked with that study or the input you provided? Sorry, can you just repeat the last part of that question?
Yeah, can you, sorry if I can't, if you can't hear me. I also, my throat's a little. Can you talk a little bit about how you worked with that study, or how you interacted with it, and kind of what inputs you provided?
So, thank you for your question, I really appreciate it. I will say first and foremost that that study is a group effort, and that we work really closely with our partners in New York State and the state of New Jersey to provide the inputs that the Army Corps suggested. And the study really does lay the groundwork for future potential infrastructure projects, and it's vitally important. We are in regular communication with the Corps about the study milestones, both at a staff and leadership level, and we will continue to be engaged throughout the study process. Both New York State and New Jersey are the non-federal sponsors, and they contribute to the cost share of the study.
Yeah, just specifically, which, what inputs were, were you all, just so I can get through the time, what inputs did you all provide? Were there like categories?
I'm, I'm not personally involved in the project, so I can get back to you with more information on it.
Yeah, I can request follow-up with the Chair. And then, do you all have a sense of how you're going to engage with a public, kind of public rollout and sharing and educating folks about this and seeking input? I know it's been asked a couple of times, and we were still waiting, but now that we have this, do you think there's a timeline that you could share?
The Army Corps is going to be rolling out a public process pretty soon, we hope. They, they are guiding this process, so we defer to them.
Got it.
There will be public meetings, and there will also be opportunities to interact online. So if you go on their website right now, they have interactive maps and storyboards that you can kind of follow and see what's going on in your district or in districts around New York City. And there will be an open public comment period until, I believe, Janu, in January 2023. So we ask that all of your constituents join. What we would love to do is work with you all to invite the Army Corps to do presentations in your district. So please feel free to reach out, and we're happy to help facilitate that.
That's great. And then I had one, one question, it's a little bit off topic, but since we did bring up trees, I couldn't, I couldn't not ask. I'm sorry I didn't get to the tree canopy hearing. I just had a question on, for heat vulnerable communities. And I, I'm sorry, I don't have, I didn't go through the transcript of that hearing, but could you share if you all have done any work or any updates on the use of trees for cool corridors in heat vulnerable communities? I mean, I'm in Bushwick, so it's one of those areas. Just curious to have any.
Absolutely. And I have my deputy commissioner could talk more about it, but I can tell you that that is very much what dictates where we plant, is a heat vulnerability index. And we are, we, we know so strongly how important our trees are to cooling. We actually just launched a study, a partnership with the Natural Areas Conservancy, that looks at monitoring really how much the temperature decreases because of the impact of trees. So, but the heat vulnerability index is very much, you know, an indicator of how and where we plant.
So is, in, in terms of that, as an indicator, yes, but in, in a kind of a guiding factor?
Yes.
But can you give a little update on where you've started, or, or how, you know, how far along you are in that?
Absolutely. Jennifer, can I ask you to do that? Yeah? Here.
Thank you so much for that question. Just to answer, sort of, I think the first thing that you were asking about is that we're funded to fully plant out every possible location under our jurisdiction, so along the public right of way, in parkland, for the, for the vulnerable communities for HVI four and five, which, as you, you sound like you're familiar with it, that DOHMH really sets those criteria. So it's, we're not going to choose one card or over another. We're doing everything we can possibly do in, in four and five. We're partially through five, we should finish that in the next, I think, year or so, and then we're moving on to four, after that.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Thank you, Chairs.
Thank you very much. So I would like to give a chance to ask question, Councilmember Ariola.
Thank you, Chairs. Thank you so much for, for being here today, Commissioners. And where did, oh, okay. So I just, for a, for a moment, want to talk about maintenance, because a lot of times along the boardwalk, we'll have like little mini showers and such, and they break, and then there are gallons of water that are just flowing out. And we'll call for a little bit of time, and it seems to take a long time. I will, the, the team is responsive, but says the plumbers are, have another priority, they're on another job. So are you doing this type of maintenance in-house, or is it something that's contracted out?
We do that type of maintenance in-house, Councilmember Ariola, and thank you for the question and for raising it. And this is an important aspect, and the council was instrumental in helping us with the budget that was passed in July. We actually were able to bring on a significant number of new workers, maintenance workers, and also tradespeople, because that's something that we've so desperately needed. So plumbers, carpenters, and so that, those new people are, were, have almost all been hired. And so that work is done by our plumbers in-house, and we will have more of them. So I hope we can be more responsive and more quickly responsive in situations like that.
Thank you, I appreciate it. And just to touch on lifeguards, we worked, you, Deputy Commissioner, myself, we worked so hard together regarding lifeguards, Chair Krishnan and Chair Kagan. And I agree with him, we need to work now, and I know you are, because we've had conversations, Deputy Commissioner, and, and I know that you're working on it. So last year, this past summer season, we worked on kind of immediate fixes, like paying the lifeguards more money. Will that continue into the next season, or was that a one-shot infusion for more money for the lifeguards? That's part one.
Yes, thank you for the question, and it was a one-shot infusion, yes, from OMB.
Because we, the, the reason was, was all about incentivizing.
Yep.
And that is what we have to continue to do, is incentivize people to become lifeguards and not go. The other is, will we be continuing to have our first responders and, or teachers, or people who are not working, say, during the summer, or have shift work during the summer who are certified, continue to be eligible to become lifeguards? I know that there wasn't a tremendous response.
There wasn't.
From it.
Right, right.
But I think, I think it's because it was a very short period of time, and we were kind of throwing things together just to get things done. So I think if we, if we start to put that out there, if it's still available, to put it out there.
Will be, yes. Yep, absolutely.
And, and also, and, and I'll, I'll work hard with you and with the city council to see if we can't get our, our lifeguards to, in, in income that is competitive with other counties like Westchester or even Nassau and Suffolk Counties, because especially Nassau and Suffolk is so close to Queens and, and the other boroughs, and the federal parks who pay more. And, you know, and hopefully we can do something regarding, you know, the, the, there were some who came back on, I mean, there were a fraction of a point that did not pass, maybe the swim test or whatever, and then they were brought back on. So will there be different levels of evaluation when the tests are given now, moving forward?
I don't think different levels of evaluation, but the first deputy here has worked really hard to understand those people who didn't pass, didn't come back. She sent out a survey to all those people. So we, we are working really hard, kind of, at all different ends, the recruitment, the returnees, really understanding better where they're coming from, what the issues are, and doing direct outreach. That started before the summer ended, that started in August. So the first deputy is working hard to get as much detail as possible, and, and really bring, bring in as many as we can, and encourage as many as we can.
And I want to say also that I appreciate that at the time when we didn't have enough lifeguards on the beach, you were not just on the phone calling, both of you, you were there physically on the beach, making sure that people were, were safe. And I, I appreciate that, because my, me and my staff were out there, and we were doing that. The other thing I want to thank you for is the collaboration that you had with the NYPD in our office when the boardwalk was being terrorized by ATVs and motorized bikes. So, and, and we effectively put an end to it. So, so that was, was terrific. There are still issues, you know, with just random people on motorized bikes along the boardwalk, but your officers are very attentive to that, and they do have a wonderful collaborating relationship with the NYPD. And that's it, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I would like to, to add that even today on the boardwalk, we met a gentleman who said that all of the signs, no motorized vehicles, you know, et cetera, no e-bikes at certain time, et cetera. Though we put like 50,000 of the signs at every meter, but nothing changes, because everybody feels that like nobody's getting tickets. So the more tickets could be written, I would definitely encourage this, because the word will spread out right away, that like, if you're violating the law, you're getting fined. Otherwise, it will be like, people complaining to me about this like lawlessness on the boardwalk all the time. That's why I ask about collaboration with NYPD, and also like, how, how does it work with Parks Enforcement Officers? One more question before I move to the next topic. We didn't even talk today about services to beachgoers. I believe every time I go to another city in the United States of America, I'm not even talking about abroad, abroad, but like, if you go today to Miami Beach, Fort Myers Beach, Virginia Beach, to New Jersey, anywhere you can easily rent a chair, easily rent umbrella, easily get something like some simple services. In New York City, you need to bring everything with yourself to the beach, everything. And like, and I'm not talking about food. We need to preserve our great restaurants and cafes and everything else, but I'm talking about even basic services, something to rent, something to buy. I'm talking about beachfront activities, and it will create a lot of jobs, a lot of money to New York City, to Parks Department. It will make our beaches more hospitable, more friendly, more safe, because every private business that would be responsible for a certain sector of this beach will do everything possible to make it safe and clean, better than Parks Department. So why we never entertain this program or anything like this?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember. And we do work really hard, actually, to have amenities and concessions for people in our parks and on our beaches and on our boardwalks. The Rockaways has been very successful in great, you know, concessions. We have put out an RFP for concessions in Coney Island. It was actually awarded to the Coney Island Alliance. They had trouble finding people to actually provide the service. But it's something that we are always looking to do, is to add more amenities to the beach, and where we will reach out to the community, we've reached out to elected officials. We're happy to put out another solicitation and another RFP to try and build support for more amenities on the beach. We're, we're always looking to do that.
And is it true, I was told that the reason why these services are not provided is because there is a state agency that prohibits these rentals and everything else? Is it true?
There's a state agency that what?
There is a state, New York State Agency, like Department of Environmental Conservation, that is prohibiting rental activities on, on the beach. Is it true?
No, not that, not that we're aware of, no.
Let them know.
No.
Okay, thank you. So can we move now to, ah, okay. Now I recognize my good friend, Councilmember Dinavitz.
Hello, good afternoon. Thank you so much for being here, Commissioner, Deputy Commissioner, Ms. Fishman. I don't know if you have a title, I apologize. Well, Ms. Fishman is just fine, then. So for, I mean, I've heard a lot of talking about lifeguards, and, you know, obviously there's the, the shortage. We have a school, many schools in my district, one of them's Clinton High School, and the pool has been broken for a long time. If the pool's not working, not, not functional, students aren't swimming, let alone learning how to be lifeguards. And it's an incredible opportunity. I've heard of other schools throughout the Bronx that had once beautiful swimming pools that are no longer functional. What would work, if at all, is Parks doing with the Department of Education, or is the mayor, is the administration doing to have Parks and DOE work together so that our students can learn to swim, learn to be lifeguards, and perhaps help fill that job shortage?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember. It's a great question. That already happens. Parks works quite closely with DOE on our Learn to Swim program. So we ha, we actually use DOE pools, and we have a great partnership whereby our aquatics team goes to DOE schools and, and trains kids through Learn to Swim and our Swim for Life program. We have actually been in several conversations over the last few months with DOE to expand that program and identify target schools where, because our Swim for Life and our swimming lessons are generally for younger kids, but absolutely, we want to work on a partnership for high school students and for older kids to be able to have the opportunity for them to become lifeguards.
Right, as part, you're right, as part of that program would be ideally training them, creating a.
A pipeline.
I was going to say a pool, but then I was like, eh, it's not, yeah. I feel like I'm trying too hard. But are part of those conversations recognizing that the facilities used to exist in some schools, again, I'm talking about Clinton High School, but it exists in other places as well.[1783.45] But it's not just the programming, it's, it's the, the infrastructure. Is part, is that part of the conversation? And if not, can that start being part of the conversation? Because there's, you're, you're, I imagine you're not gonna have a really good swim program on land.
Absolutely, it's part of the conversation. Identifying which schools and what has availability and where are there pool, um, opportunities to use pools for training.
Well, we got a great school then, it's Clinton.
That infrastructure is not our responsibility.
Right, but, but, but I imagine...
So it's a question for DOE, really. But absolutely, we're, you know, we need the pools. We have the instructors, we have people who could go out and help with this training. So we are looking for sites, absolutely.
As you're collaborating, I have one other question. As you're collaborating, I would request that, although it is not your responsibility, the, building the pools, that that would be part of the conversation. And that you would impress upon the, the administration, the Department of Education, that without swimming pools, you are unable to train lifeguards. And so I would, I would ask, could that be part, part of your conversations as you train those older students? Secondly, I, I do thank you for highlighting and mentioning the daylighting of Tibbetts Brook in your opening.
Yes.
You know I love it. It's such an important project for, for a variety of reasons, including some of the environmental justice reasons we've been talking about. So first, if you could just update the committee on the status of that project, including the Greenway portion of that project? And any conversations with non-city entities like state agencies, like the MTA, or private building owners, which are, which need to be part of that conversation? So that's the first part. And secondly, you know, part of this project is, the importance of it is to prevent flooding and the overflow of our sewer system. And we think very much of the flooding of the major degen last year, which made national headlines. And I'm wondering what efforts are being made to plant more trees, back to tree canopy, more trees along the highway to help mitigate those storms? And not just that highway, but, you know, we have Henrietta Parkway and the Bronx River Parkway. What efforts are being made to plant other green infrastructure-like trees along those highways? And if it's not, what can we do as a council to push forward some of those? In addition, again, to the daylighting of Tibbetts Brook, the, the planting of more trees to help with the flooding and the erosion that we're seeing, both onto the highway and onto the service roads of our highways?
Thank you, Councilmember, I appreciate the question. We are also really excited about the daylighting of Tibbetts Brook. It's an amazing project. And I'm gonna have, toss it over to Jennifer, our Deputy Commissioner for Environment, and planning to answer an update where we are.
Good afternoon, thanks so much for the question. We are, the, well, first of all, the Tibbetts Brook project is being managed and built by the DEP, as you probably know, and it's in design. And we're working with them very closely on the design with the consultant, both the phases that are taking place inside Van Cortlandt Park, as well as the tail that it's going to continue outside of it, because their daylighting is happening, as you know, both inside and outside, which is really exciting. And we're also looking at access. There's, you know, a question, we're working with different potential property owners to see if we can get better access along the pieces that are outside of Van Cortlandt Park. So that equity and accessibility is definitely important to us. Your second question was, piece was about just adding canopy generally, right?
Oh, yeah, along the...
The highways.
Along the highways, yes.
Right, again, you know, it's not all of Parks's jurisdiction, a lot of it is state highways. So we work with partners wherever we can. And DEP's approach, and I don't want to speak for our sister agency, is very much a collaborative approach when they're looking at, uh, looking at their cloud burst studies. They're looking at all property types and thinking about how to increase permeability and canopy.
Right, I mean, I get, recognizing that it's maybe not your property, I guess that's kind of the, and it's in line with my first question, which is, you're the, the tree people, right? You're the, you're the, you know, I don't imagine the DOT is very good at trees. They're, I'm not sure they're good at anything. But, but you, but you are the experts, so, and, and, you know, the work that you're doing in Parks really does impact everything else. And the work that DOT does, and the work that DEP does, really, it's all intertwined. And that's really what I'm asking about, is if those conversations happen, if they approached you or you approached them about planting more trees? And if not, how we can help facilitate those conversations? Because that's really what's gonna help a lot when it comes to, to some of the more moderate storms, is, is increasing the trees and the, and the capacity to absorb water and the canopy.
I'm not familiar with specific requests for specific transportation corridors. I do have to say that our partnership with the Forest for All NYC Coalition, with those, you know, sort of dozens of groups, really, they're the folks who are taking this broad look and have identified potential canopy protection and expansion everywhere, including those places. We're definitely at the table. We will, we love sharing our expertise. And so if somebody does, has approached us, and you've heard we haven't responded well, please let me know, and I'm happy to participate in any...
Thank you, we'll certainly follow up with, with, with that. Thank you so much, and thank you, Chairs.
Thank you. I would like to recognize Councilmember Palladino, please, your time.
Thank you, I have to say, this is a very enjoyable meeting. I really mean, this is such, such great stuff to talk about. In my district, 19, we're surrounded by the sound, which fortunately doesn't give us any problems whatsoever.
That's amazing.
So that's a good thing. To address the tree issue, we have something going on. Donovan Richards introduced into Queens, 100,000 trees for Queens. So we are actively, I can't wait to get involved in that. Because we have so many dead trees, and I know unfortunate, it doesn't fall into Parks as much as it falls into DOT, because our tree-lined streets is not so much you, it's DOT. So that's a little tough.
No, it's us, it's us.
It's you?
It is.
Oh, then I hit the jackpot. Oh my God, this is so great.
Now's your chance.
Oh my goodness, oh my goodness, oh my goodness, okay.
Does that change your feeling about the hearing?
No, no, not at all. Actually, actually, this is great, because we have countless calls, countless. And I mean, hundreds of calls that have come in, even maybe close to 1,000 in my 10 months so far. And it's all about dead trees, trees that have fallen, limbs that have fallen into people's properties due to storms. So, well, we'll talk about that in a private session, I'll give you a buzz. Also, we have a lot of wetlands in College Point. And there's something very specific I'd like to talk to you about concerning there, because that's preservation. And I'd like to see a lot of that kept that way. So I will address this privately, all right? But I do want to thank you so very much. We also have a very big problem with our Clearview Expressway, our Cross Island Parkway. Again, that state, that, I don't believe that includes you. And you cannot possibly plant any more greenery along the side of the, of either highway. So thank you again, this has been great, you ladies are wonderful, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Palladino. So now I believe we need to move to the very exciting part called public testimonies. So I would like to give a chance to speak to one of the community leaders in Southern Brooklyn, to the person, could you stay for a minute, could you stay for a minute, could you stay for a minute, please? Yeah. Yeah, could you stay for...
I can sit over here.
Ah, okay, ah, okay, okay, yeah. Okay, got it. So I would like to give a chance to speak to the great community leader from Southern Brooklyn, advocate for people with disabilities, Deborah Greif. And also to invite, at the same time, Christopher Greif. He's not just a son of Deborah Greif, but he's also big advocate for people with disabilities at MTA and everywhere else. So they have a lot to say. So Deborah and Chris, it's your floor.
First, I know I have to identify Deborah Greif, and this is my son Christopher Greif. And I want to thank you for having this hearing. So I'm glad every city councilman, I'm glad the Parks Department's here. As you can see, I now, I was raised by a parent with disabilities. So I'm 64 now, I'm very proud of it. I remember the Coney Island Boardwalk, the way it used to be. And the same for Rockaway, because I used to go to Rockaway Playland with my parents to see my great-grandma. I don't remember problems with the boardwalks at that time. Now I'm frustrated, you see, I, in 2019, broke my foot for the sixth time and had a concussion. So now, for six months to a year, I was using a wheelchair, thankfully. This is the gentleman who pushed me.
Yes.
Thank you. And what happened is, I used to, we used to go to the boardwalk regularly, because also my younger brother had to be in a nursing home on the boardwalk for a while. And I didn't want to go anymore, and I'll tell you why. It is the, was the most painful ride to ever. So, and I had a special chair that was cushioned, and I could not handle the pain. My back was hurting to the point where that, when I, I purposely went back to the doctors and I begged him, and I very really, I asked for a cortisone shot, I couldn't take it. And this was just from going on the boardwalk, because the shape of the boards and the breaking of it is terrible. The other issue is even with a walker, I won't do it. Because the pain, it vibrates through my arms and goes to my back again. Now, I want it restored, and I know that certain av, other advocates may not be happy. I don't care what material you use, fix it. I want it to be truly accessible. I want to be able to go back and forth on the boardwalk. I miss going there. I want to be able to sit on a bench, or sit on my walker, and be able to look at the ocean. But I don't want to be in so much pain that I have to beg for a pain shot. That is not right for me or anybody. The wheelchair, the people with wheelchairs, they won't say anything because they want to be out. But the truth is, we need the, we need our boardwalks to be truly accessible, but also the ramps to get up and down. I also like to see more mats on the beach, so persons who want to go to the water but need to use a wheelchair or walker can get on. Because I, it is frustrating when you would like to go in the water, but you can't, because how are you gonna go? The other issue I'd like to bring up very quickly, is when you build, yeah, I would love trees to be built, they live on Ocean Parkway. Do you know that all the trees they used to build have took the sidewalks and brought them up? They had broken the sidewalks to the point that you have to go up and down, it's like mountain climbing. It's un, it's not right, we, you need, I do understand the need for the, I do understand the needs for those trees, I do understand for the plants. But do plants that don't, their roots don't go and destroy your sidewalks or the pathways? That's what makes it very hard for people with disabilities to be able to go into the park.
And seniors.
And people with seniors, people visual, whatever type of disability. We cannot use our own parks, our own beaches, boardwalks, because it's not truly accessible. So it is frustrating. Now, my son has...
Good afternoon, I'm Christopher D. Greif. As an advocate for people with disabilities, nine years, and I want to be very clear, as, as my mother said the same thing, I'm gonna say, boardwalks are cracking, Councilmembers, you were there, you fell. Much worse, I seen people flying in the air, and then really...
Something wrong? Oh, nobody talk, see, microphones.
Still hurt you.
As I said again, but I'll even speak louder, but I, thank you. The main concern is, is, is accessibility for senior or a person with disability, they cannot get onto the boardwalk because there's holes, there are cracks. And let me tell you, we seen people flying in the air. And I can tell you, when we were at, I was at Brighton Beach during the parade of trains, I saw somebody actually did fall from the platform, and I was like, eeh, somebody flew. And I mean, I seen him in a perfect angle. It's not safe, you know, they say we're gonna fix it, when? When I turn, I'm right now 39, when? Another 30 years, I'll be a senior by then. And by then, we'll be different councilmen, different mayors. It needs to be worked now. The safety of us, we ask that, we need to fix these boardwalks. We ask that curb cut, everything needs to be fixed. Anything that's parkland should be truly ADA accessible. In your testimony, you mentioned everything. But accessibility is the key that we need to make clear. If you can make a park accessible in Queens, why can't the other boroughs and counties can do that? We have to see people go out of New York to, just to go to a decent beach? I'm sorry. The only people like, the only thing they will go down to Coney Island is the, going to see the Cyclones, go to Nathan's, or not-disabled people. It's gotta be both ways, and we have to work on that. As well as trees need to be a little more safely, because we need access for accessory ride, bus stops, needs to be made clear for them as well. Parks, trees are very important, but a customer who needs to get on and off needs to be safe. Thank you.
And we do agree to volunteer to be test, to test the act of it's truly accessible.
Yes.
So that you do have proof someone with disabilities tested it.
Thank you so much for your testimony and for your advocacy on behalf of people with disabilities. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And you're welcome.
Thank you very much.
So I would like to give a chance to speak to Paul Galley. Okay, no problem.
I want to thank the committee chairs, council members, and staff members, members of the administration here today, who are doing the essential work under discussion. We'll submit this testimony in written form later in the week. It's a pleasure to be back with the city council. I've previously been before the council as a member of the staff of the Department of Environmental Conservation of the state in New York, Hudson Riverkeeper. Here with me is Aya Morris, a visiting Fulbright student researcher, who's working with the Columbia Climate School Resilient Coastal Communities Project. This RCCP, Resilient Coastal Communities Project, is a partnership between Columbia University and the New York City Environmental Justice Alliance. We're very proud of this partnership. We try to manage it as an equal, even-handed partnership, and take our cues from where the true knowledge really lies, which is the community. We seek to foster actionable, equitable solutions to flood risks, along with complementary benefits like habitat restoration, job creation, and more empowered communities. And it's part of Columbia University's new commitment to what they call the Fourth Purpose, which in simple terms is researchers and practitioners working together side by side in real time to solve critical problems like the ones we're talking about today. So that Harbor and Tributeary Study, HATS, Tentatively Selected Plan, TSP, is almost certainly the largest such study the Army Corps of Engineers has ever taken on. It's also our last realistic chance to properly protect coastal communities from the growing climate change-driven threats we face from flooding. These are really existential threats when it comes down to it. Its challenges, it needs to deal with three distinct problems. Storm surge, like we saw from Hurricane Sandy 10 years ago. Heavy downpours, like the unprecedented storms of Ida and Henri last year. And seas that are rising at least a foot over the first half of the century, according to the New York City Panel on Climate Change, most recent report. And it has to balance five very important goals. Public safety, ecological protection, access to the waterfront, protecting community character, and achieving restorative justice and social cohesion. Because there are a lot of communities that we interviewed at the RCCP said to us, don't talk to us about resilience. We've, we've had to be resilient for decades, for generations. We want restorative justice, we want social cohesion, in addition to flood protection. So the Army Corps study, I hope it isn't me. The Army Corps, thank you. The, the Army Corps study has over 40 different types of flood protection measures that they discuss in this tentatively selected plan. And the key is picking the right combination of those solutions across each community over a 900-mile stretch of coastline, working with those communities, not for them. And if it's okay, I'll take another couple of minutes, because I think it's important for you to know what the Army Corps is promising by way of community engagement. But I'll pause and make sure that is okay.
Sure, that's okay with me, if that's okay with you.
It's okay with me, but you said you will submit it in, in written form anyway.
Okay, I will be brief, Mr. Chair. The Army Corps of Engineers has a new mandate, and it's part of the Justice 40 program, which is to center communities in the planning for their own futures. And to advance this goal, to their credit, the Army Corps' initial draft communications plan, which was shared with Columbia and other advocates last Friday, provides for an environment and climate justice working group. It's first of its kind. We at Columbia and NIDJ have been asking for this since first discussions with the Corps in, in May. The Army Corps is promising that public participation and meaningful incorporation of their input from the public is key to this study's success. They're promising effective two-way communication with stakeholders to find and build consensus on the most feasible, environmentally acceptable, innovative, and effective solutions possible. Now, if this is going to work... Now, if this is going to work, as my colleague, Aya Morris, is about to tell you, we need a fundamental shift in one aspect of this planned timetable. Because when you think of all the things the Army Corps has promised to do, first, you've got to give the communities the capacity to participate, and then you've got to give them the time. So if I may, the summary is from Aya.
Okay. But you're not registered to testify. You never registered to testify.
I, I, I thought I had registered.
No, you did, but you never did it. What is your name again?
My name's Aya Morris. I'm a Fulbright student. And so I'll just keep this brief. Apologies for not having formally registered. What we just wanted to advocate for is a longer timeframe for community consultation on the HAT's draft report. At present, the consultation is open only until January the 6th, and a longer timeframe will allow for more comprehensive community comments on an extremely complex project which involves many communities.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. We can't center communities in three months. It's as simple as that.
Okay.
We appreciate the opportunity to testify and apologize if we've overstated our welcome.
It's okay. Send us in written form, that will be helpful. Thank you. So I would like to give a chance to speak to Sherise Palomino, New Yorkers for Parks. That's on Zoom.
I'm the Director of Advocacy and Programs at New Yorkers for Parks. We are a founding member of the Playfair Coalition. I got muted.
Yes, you can continue, yes.
We are a founding member of the Playfair Coalition, which includes over 400 organizations across the five boroughs. Thank you to the Committee on Resilience and Waterfronts and the Parks Committee for the opportunity to speak about the resiliency of our city's beaches and waterfronts. I also want to thank Chairs Krishnan and Kagan for their leadership on this important issue. This climate crisis has highlighted the critical needs of our parks system, including adequate funding for parks staffing to do resiliency work and to address inequities across, in access, infrastructure, and general maintenance. The city's decade-long divestment in parks continues to exacerbate these tragic inequities in our parks system. The city council and mayor can fix it by making 1% investment of the city budget into parks. Beaches like Coney Island and the Rockaways need urgent investments in maintenance and upkeep. With a well-funded Parks Department, our beaches and waterfronts can be properly maintained. Basic maintenance issues on the Coney Island boardwalk can reduce issues for beachgoers from damaged planks of wood and exposed nails. Many parks advocates and community leaders invest their time volunteering to do jobs that NYC Parks Department has not been able to adequately fund, like cleaning up beaches and supporting wetlands that are much needed in our beaches and waterfronts. New York is the greatest city in the world with a parks system that does not reflect modernity, nor have the proper infrastructure to support the climate crisis we are living in. We are overdue for a transformative investment in our parks system. 1% of the city budget for parks can improve maintenance for the 160 miles of waterfront that New York City Parks manages, and ensures that our beaches and waterfronts are well-maintained and equitably serving New Yorkers of all communities and backgrounds. The New York City Parks Department does a valiant job maintaining these aging resources, but needs more funding to do so. It is time to allocate 1% of the city budget to parks. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Thank you. So now I would like to give a chance to testify to Michael Dulang, Riverkeeper, Riverkeeper. Yes. Michael Dulang.
Thank you, and good afternoon. Thanks, Chair, persons Kagan and Krishnan, and members of your committees, for the opportunity to testify to you, to your attention to waterfronts. And it's good to see my friend Paul Galley, and my former captain of the Riverkeeper ship in attendance. I'm Mike Dulang. I'm a senior attorney with Hudson Riverkeeper, also on the Swim Steering Committee. That's the Stormwater Infrastructure Matters Coalition Steering Committee. And I would like to take this opportunity to just point you to three ongoing city, state, and federal processes that are going to have an enormous impact on our waterfronts in the near future. Start with the city. On Friday, the city blew a deadline for the Adapt NYC Plan. This was a plan that's required by local law 122. It was a product of the Waterfronts and Resiliency Committee, and something that my group and a lot of other groups pushed very hard for. It's supposed to have a comprehensive study for all 520 miles of coastline, as well as prepare the city for climate change, but they focus on environmental justice. We met with the mayor's office numerous times, we've sent letters, we, we worked with 14 other organizations to submit green infrastructure program recommendations. And I'm not sure what happened between this summer and now, but the, the plan is not out. We don't know what's going on with it. So we urge you to, we urge your offices to take action to ensure that that plan comes out soon. It is critical that it come out, to start informing other plans that the city is undertaking right now, like Renewable Rikers, Power Up New York City, and others. The second thing I want to talk about is, just to follow on what Paul had said, about the Army Corps tentatively selected plan. First, that plan is going to, if, if completed, it is going to have an enormous impact on New Yorkers and their waters, of course. Storm surge barriers, which are slated for Jamaica Bay, Gowanis Canal, Newtown Creek, and Flushing Creek, all have, even if left open, most of the time, they have a tremendous impact on aquatic ecosystems. They can prevent fish migration, they can hamper sediment transport, they can prevent the flushing of combined sewer overflows. So these types of impacts need to be looked at before that plan is finalized. And we agree, and we hope you'll, you'll support the Rise to Resiliency Coalition in seeking additional public processes from the Army Corps, including a, an environmental justice and climate justice committee, citizen oversight committee, to work with the Army Corps to, to help that process, that public process along, and get voices heard. The third thing I want to point you to is the state is currently soliciting information about water quality and water uses, recreational water uses, in an attempt to reset, to either relax or strengthen water quality designated uses for the waters in and around New York City. I just have less than a minute left, if that's okay.
Okay.
These uses are going to set the, the criteria for protections for those water qualities. And so whether you can swim in a waterway or not will be determined by this process. So it is important that all city agencies be directed to give information to the state in setting these. So Parks and Department of Environmental Protection especially have information on that, and that New Yorkers engage, and that the city council engage in how these waterways are used, because a lot of them are recreational waterways, or should be. So we do have a website where we are sending people to, at Riverkeeper, to, and I, this is in our written testimony, where we are collecting information on that. So we'd appreciate your support in getting that information, making sure that the state sets the, the right uses, so that we can use our waterways. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks a lot. So I would like to give a chance for closing remarks to my colleague, Chair Krishnan.
Well, I want to close today's hearing by first thanking Chair Kagan for hosting this hearing jointly, for inviting me to come out to see the Coney Island boardwalk earlier today, too, and for raising the important issues about both boardwalk maintenance and how that ties to the larger issues of waterfront maintenance and care for our city. As we heard in today's hearing, there are a number of issues that we as a city need to address if we are to be a sustainable city, which we need to be, and if we are to make sure that we're prepared for the worsening climate crisis ahead. That spans of work from our waterfronts, from our Coney Island boardwalk, from everyday maintenance at the boardwalk, to larger issues of care that are needed as well. And it spans issues to take care of our inland parks, and of course, our tree canopy, and how central of a role it plays in making sure that we are prepared for the climate crisis that we face and will continue to face. So thank you all for coming today. Thank you to our Parks Department, our Commissioner Donahue. Thank you to our Parks Committee staff, as well as my office staff as well, and the staff of the Waterfront Committee, too, for doing a great job in hosting and putting together today's hearing. Thank you all.
Thank you so much, Chair Krishnan, and thank you for your leadership, and for visiting Coney Island Boardwalk today and witnessing the deplorable conditions on Coney Island Boardwalk, and helping to bring this issue forward. Today, we heard a lot of questions and a lot of concerns from so many angles about conditions of our boardwalk. I would say all boardwalks, but specifically Coney Island Boardwalk also, about conditions of our beaches, questions about shortage of lifeguards, about public safety on boardwalks, and in general, what Department of Parks and, in general, city administration is doing to turn things around, to make sure that people are enjoying parks, enjoying boardwalks, enjoying beaches. And we live in New York City, this is capital of the world, and we need to make sure that all New Yorkers and all tourists are enjoying our waterfront. That's why we decided to host this joint committee hearing in the first place. I also would like to praise my office staff, and of course, Waterfront Committee staff, especially our great counsel, Jessica Steinberg-Albim, and all public testimonies. Thank you so much. It helps to understand various angles of our public policy. And I believe we have a lot of work to do. If you listen carefully today, we have a lot of works to do. So we're going to continue this work on behalf of our constituents, on behalf of all New Yorkers. Thank you very much, and I'm closing this hearing.